Chair for Eds?
Absent.
Tracy Analek Everett?
Here.
Christine Galvo?
Delayed.
Frank Garnett?
Here.
Georgia Patchen?
Here.
Bill Zoff?
Here.
Melissa Thompson?
Here.
Dr. Dorwood, would you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, we have the two exits located at the rear of the LGI.
I would like to ask for a moment's silence from Mr. Joseph Cesar and Mr. Warren Morris Molly Medley, both of whom were retired custodians in the Beacon City School District. Thank you. Dr. Dorwood, would you like to introduce our workshop tonight?
Yes, actually, we have two presentations tonight. We're going to start off with Dr. Seabirding, who is going to be presenting the district safety plan.
Thank you, Dr. Dorwood. Given the opportunity to give you a brief overview of the district-wide school safety plan and the various components that fall underneath the district-wide school safety team. This is in accordance with Project SAVE, which was established in the early 90s about safety planning in schools, et cetera. The generic plans, and I'll talk more about that, can be found on our district website, both the district-wide school safety plan and also a generic version for the building safety plans as well. All right, so let me just put the next slide on. There are only two slides, so let me just go over here. And that gives you a sense of the entire, you know, safety plan for the district. And as a district-wide school safety team, we have met. We have made a couple of changes to the organization of the team so that it encompasses more of what the SAVE legislation requires for the members to be. I will keep telling you that when you look at the plan that is online, you will not see the names of individuals, and that's also true for the building plans because much of that is confidential and proprietary information. So we have met as a team, and, one, we talked about the composition of people who will be serving on the team, and, secondly, each of the schools submitted their school building safety plans for the upcoming year, so that's been completed. And they will be, like I said, I put a generic summary of the building plans also on the district website, and you'll see the same thing as you go to the individual schools. You'll see the same building plan, except it will have the name of your school, and that's the only difference. The district safety plan actually addresses a number of major components, and it is in that summary where you can read about what those components are. For example, the first section simply describes, you know, the concept of operations, the plan, the review of the plan, what the district is required to do every year, because the board essentially has to adopt this plan as we go into the next year. Section two, there are summary statements in there about responding to threats and act of violence. Section three talks about communication with others. And the fourth section, prevention and intervention strategies. That's the district-wide school safety. It's a document that is, you have it in front of you, it's pretty inclusive, and then there's another section to that. Again, as I indicated, there is a section in there of who the people are that are on that school safety team, people that are authorized to make decisions, and things of that nature, again, which is confidential, and that will not be posted on the website. The building-level school safety teams, so you have the umbrella of the district-wide school safety team that governs the six buildings, whose plans are reviewed as well by the members. And the idea is to have one member of each school building-level safety team on that district team, so that there is communication that is crucial, you know, when we're talking about emergency planning. The six building-level teams are appointed by the school principal. They get their teams together. And there are actually two subcomponents of that team, all right? So you have, the easiest way to explain it is you have a building-level school safety team. I'll use the high school for example, so there's a building-level school safety team. That entire team, or part of that team, could also serve as the next emergency response team, call them the BURK teams, Building Emergency Response Team. Could be the same as your entire safety, or part thereof. And what the response team is charged with in case of an emergency, they will then get together and decide what course of action needs to be taken. Now, that requires a lot of planning in the back, because what is going to happen is if you have to call your BURK team together, you've got to make sure, you know, that there are teachers on there, you've got to get your custodial staff, you have your school nurse, that you have coverage for those people, they can get together really quick. That's all outlined in every one of the building emergency response teams. And then the last component of that, there is a post-incident response team. That team will assist the school community after an act or disaster, or a violent incident has occurred, to get the school back to normalcy. And that may involve calling, let's say, a social worker psychologist from other areas to assist with whatever occurred, okay? That team is somewhat smaller than the entire safety team, usually has, obviously, the school psychologists, counselors, social workers, et cetera, and outside help may have to be called in. So those are the three components of that team. The other thing, as I indicated earlier, that all the schools have submitted their building school safety plans to the district-wide school safety team, they've been reviewed, so everyone is set to go for next year. And then the other part, which I'll just briefly mention again, is proprietary information. One of the things that we have accomplished over the last, I think, two years is that the response to many different kinds of emergency has now been standardized across the district. So I'm sure you've seen this document right here. It's a flip chart that outlines whatever has to happen, for example, injury, medical emergency, what will the school do exactly? This is not for public information, all right? Again, it contains confidential information, how a school will react to a situation, but what's good about it is that everybody is using the same language, so when kids go through the system, you know, they're not hearing something different when they go from one building to another. The response is exactly the same when you make the announcement over the PA system. So the work that has to be posted has been to allow for public comment, and we're set then for next year. So the school, the district-wide school safety team will be meeting throughout the year, and so that we can plan for doing the various drills that are required to be done, and also to get outside. For example, the chief of police in Fishville is on the district, as is Detective Williams, and to make it an encompassing group also, the school nurse is on there this year, a parent will be on there, and eventually, I think, a board member will be on there.
Right, we had notified the board that they'll have to appoint a person at the real.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
What is done to give the teachers and the staff the knowledge that's in the plan specific to their building? What is done to make them aware of the plan for their building?
Well, these particular standard orders of operation in that chart that I just showed you there, everyone has them, they've been reviewed in each of the buildings. We really didn't change much, because last year we went through it word for word. I think what is necessary is that, I think we need to bring in some more simulation activities, where we need staff training in different kinds of responses. Typically, for example, there are certain drills that happen year after year after year, but if you throw a monkey wrench, so to speak, into the mix, and see how people are going to react, those are the kinds of things we need to do. For example, what if you had a drill while kids are changing classes, but they're not coming out of class, especially at, you know, the high school, middle school, where do they go? How do you account for those kids? We have done, you know, the lockdown drills, we've done those, but, you know, in reality, if we ever had to use that for any length of time, police agencies and some of the workshops that I've attended, you don't clear a building in five minutes, or an hour, or two hours. In a real emergency, sometimes it takes much of the day to clear a building out, so do the kids really know what to do in those situations? I think we have to up the ante a little bit and try and do these, you know, what they call tabletop exercises, and I think that direction will come from the district-wide school safety team.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
And we should also thank Dr. Seabirding, because as you know, he's the chair of the committee, so he has done a lot of work this year as far as pulling the plans together for us. Thank you.
Okay.
So the second presentation is a presentation regarding our special education audit. We have Mr. Mulhern, Mr. Triasi.
This will be the E-drive? Because I'm staying on this. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Frank Mulhern, and this is Nepal Triasi, Director and Assistant Director of PPS. And as Dr. Dorwood just said, we're presenting an action plan in response to a special education audit that was done by Dr. Ronnie Kramer. I know you all have that report by her, and as well in the board docs you were sent, our response in writing. What I'm doing tonight is a condensed PowerPoint version, because there is too much information to go over in a workshop. However, we're going to highlight it for you and the public tonight, and be available at any time that the board or the superintendent selects for us to be available to discuss it in further detail. I'm going to present part of the presentation, and Mr. Triasi will present part of the presentation as well. So the key areas of the audit, these are the four major areas that Dr. Kramer was looking at. One was the organizational design and structure of the special education staffing and the program models, program model, the distribution of special education services, a file review of IEP and 504 plans and processes, and an analysis of RTI. Those are the four major areas, as highlighted in Dr. Kramer's report, and the areas that we tried to connect everything to in terms of our response. All right. The first one, the organizational design and structure of the district's staffing plan. There were, let me start off, why would we be asking about that? Well, we've undergone a lot of changes in special ed the last couple of years. This board, and my office, and the superintendents have been involved in making a lot of decisions how to best serve students with disabilities, and we've made a lot of changes. And as part of the strategic plan of the superintendent, a request for an audit to make sure that what we were doing, what we're about to do, what we planned to do, is all scrutinized by Objectivize before moving forward. I must say, we were pleased with working with Dr. Kramer and her responses. It's great to sit in a room with somebody who speaks special ed and have conversations about that in order to make sure that we're on the right track with the work that we do. So utilization of related service staff was one area. There were a lot of questions brought up in the report about how we use our social workers, how we deploy the responsibilities of psychologists, how does the speech staff work, et cetera, OT, do we contract for services, et cetera. It broke down to a couple of items, and I think we are building that into our plans as we move forward. There were some suggestions made, I will leave them in the report for you, about assigning people differently. We've examined them, they're in the report I sent to you, about what we would work with, what we acknowledge as great recommendations, and what makes sense for us. An example might be that Dr. Kramer asked if it would help us if we just assigned McKennie-Vento homeless situations to one social worker, as opposed to all. Our response is, great recommendation, however, we've spent the last five or six years developing a team that consists of myself, the assistant director, the registrar, and all four social workers to be the eyes and ears to locate, identify, and support students and their families who happen to become homeless. To assign it to one person, we feel, might not work as well. And Dr. Kramer came and met with us about it and understood where we stood, but that was one example. Another discussion under this heading was deployment of PPS administrators. That's me and the lady standing behind me. And the question became, well, Frank, as director, is responsible for added district students, high school, and two elementary schools. And Mr. Triasi's response for the middle school, two elementary schools, CPSE and a couple of kids in added district, why do we do that? It's not the greatest model, but we did it because Mr. Triasi is in training with me, this is her first year in this position, and in order for her to get a feel of secondary work, as well as elementary work, which, by the way, she's already well-versed in, having been a psychologist in our district for a number of years, we decided to do it that way. We are probably going to revert to a model more in line with what Dr. Kramer was recommending, but I wanted to explain to the board, in case you read that, we didn't just do that surreptitiously, we did it with a plan for training and development within our own administrative team. Alignment of assessment responsibilities among CSE team members, Dr. Kramer recommended and took a good look at who does the evaluations and assessments on students for initial referrals, annual reviews, and things of that sort. And essentially, we load everything onto the psychologist. So the psychologist would doing academic assessment, not always, but on major CSE reviews or initial eligibility reviews. And she's proposed, and we're going to go with it, of having our teachers trained to pick up the academic assessments, and to do that in a fashion with skill that doesn't detract at all from what we're trying to do when we're evaluating a student. And those assessment responsibilities, although we never really thought about, we just knew that psychologists did it, they do it well, and sometimes we felt it saved time, but we think there's some merit in her recommendations, we want to follow that. Review of new responsibilities for CPSE to CSE transitions. And I think, and I'm going to ask Mr. Triasi if she wants to pipe in on this in a second, but I think that the, you know, the core of this, when I first started hearing about, we better get somebody to look at special education a couple of years ago, was because our CSE classification rate was rising. In my first year here, it was 13.2 percent or something, it dropped to 12.9, but over the last four years has gone up steadily to 17.1 percent. Not an alarming number to many, but to me, something to watch. And I think that's what was the intention of the audit, to look at that. When you look at rising classification rates, as Dr. Kramer said, you've got to know where it's coming from, why it starts, how is it happening? So one of the areas we wanted to look at had to do with CPSE, preschool students coming into the CSE process, and how are we setting standards, criteria, and how are we evaluating equity and consistency in terms of how we were classifying kids on the CSE level? So I think those were four key areas. There are a number of points in the reports, if you, you know, had a chance to look at particularly that part, you'll see there are a lot of suggestions. We want to work with them, and we see that as a key area, and we do see that, by the way, we've done initial analysis, and most of our CSE, our new CSE referrals, in some ways logically, but need more control, and that, when I say control, I mean oversight in terms of students in preschool coming into CSE, and that may help us. Are you picking up this one? Mr. Triasi's going to take the next two slides while I hand out some other information.
So what Mr. Mulhern is handing out to you is a copy of the three-year phase-in plan that was referenced in the report that was sent. So one of the other areas that Dr. Kramer had referenced in her report was the distribution of special education services and educational programs at the elementary level in particular. So the current model, those on the board would probably remember, a couple of years ago, was policy option two, I think it was. We had gone through a number of different options of how we can distribute special education programs and services in a way that was going to benefit the students and work with the current resources. And with every model, there were strengths, and then there were some areas where it fell a little short, and we knew that going into it, but we picked the best model for the students and the district at the time. And some of what came out in the report were that there were some, a couple areas that that current model is causing some difficulty. And one of those is that, on the PowerPoint on there, is the overload of demand in the two buildings. So the way that we have it right now is the majority, about 95 percent, of our special education programs and students are housed in two of our elementary buildings, and because of that, there is an increased demand on the building principal and the other people within those buildings. And then, in addition, because of that, most of our special education-related service providers are housed within those buildings, because that's where the majority of the need is, in terms of special education need. But of course, as you know, prior to becoming special education, students do have their needs as their general education students, and a lot of, since those related service providers are spending the majority of their time in those two buildings, that support is not as readily available within the other two buildings. So those were raised as concerns that we need to look at, and I'm going to talk in a minute about, you know, how we can address that. And then two other things that came out within the report are related to our current model and distribution, are not necessarily related to the current model option, policy option that we have, but more so just related to our special education program in general. One being multi-grade self-contained classes. Now, I don't know if you remember, but a few years ago, we had three-year self-contained classes, so that there would be a self-contained class, a special education class, would service kids kindergarten, first and second grade level, all in one class, and then there would be one for third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders. And we were able to reduce that to two grades, so a K1 class, a 2-3 class, and a 4-5 class, which, of course, is better, but now with all the increased demands of the common core, we're recognizing that really there needs to be a need to focus more on one grade level at a time. So that came out in the report as something to look at. And then, in addition, the current model with ICT, integrated co-teaching classes. A few years back, the model was changed in which there are, at the elementary level, the integrated co-teaching classes have a special education teacher part of the day, and then the teacher's teaching assistant is there the other part of the day. And within Dr. Kramer's report, it was recognized that there needs to be increased support in those classes, in terms of the special education teacher being there a greater amount of time, and/or increased special, teaching assistant support. So those came out as some needs. So our proposed solutions to that is that we have a three-year phase-in, a proposed three-year phase-in model, which you have in front of you, so I'm not going to go into great detail about that model, but certainly at the end, if you have any questions specific to it, we can answer that. But you'll notice, within the model, we're redistributing the special education classes amongst all of the elementary buildings. So again, it's a phase-in, we're not just equalizing so that we're moving all of the classes next year, so that there's equal classes in each of the four buildings, because that would require a large number of special education students to have to move into an unfamiliar building. As we know, as we've talked about in the past, transitions for special education students are difficult, so we want to phase it in, so we're limiting those transitions. What you'll notice within the proposed model is that we're moving towards having the single-grade self-contained classes, and that's what I had mentioned before, currently, they're two-years span, two-year grade level span in those classes, and we want to move them to be one grade level. We're also looking at increasing the special education teacher support, the way that we would be doing that essentially is the special education teacher would be within the class, within the integrated co-teaching class for the majority of the period, or the majority of the day, and then the other part of the day, they would be picking up the resource room students, resource room or reading students for that grade level. And the plan also, as you'll notice, will limit the school transitions for the special education students, which is something that we've been trying to do all along, so that when you'll see in the plan, the continuum, the full continuum of special education services are available at a grade level. So if it's in sergeant, at say, for example, say first grade at sergeant would have a, the resource room support would have, the integrated co-teaching support would also have the self-contained classes at that grade level. So if a student mid-year or at the end of the year, it's recognized that they need a greater level of support, or maybe less support, they can move into a different class without having to move buildings. Still, they would possibly have to move a building initially, as they do now, in order to access those supports, but then, once they're there, that support would continue, and as they, you know, if it was first grade this year, it would be second grade next year, so that it moves up with the students. I think that covers everything.
So before I move to the next part, let me just say that there's, not an hysterical, historical and an economic side to this. So just so it's known publicly, the start of our phase-in doesn't cost anything, we just move teachers. And I'm a special ed teacher by trade, and we move with the students, the students don't move, and we stay still. So part of it can be done, but eventually, you hit a point where you don't have enough people. So again, as I said in my opening remarks, we like the feedback we got from Dr. Kramer, and we want to make special ed services as high quality as possible with some of the precepts that we had up here and the goals that we have, but somewhere along the line, it needs to take that. I know, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention, that the elementary principals meet with us, and we meet with them on a regular basis, especially the second half of every year, to discuss how do we plan for next year in special ed students. And I know also that prior to our meetings for the last six years, there have been discussions in this district of looking at elementary schools in a different light, whereby you could have the possibility of two pre-K2 schools and two 3, grade 3-5 schools, and every stu- So, before I move to the next part, let me just say that there's, there's an hysterical, historical and a, an economic side to this. So, just so it's known publicly, the start of our phase-in doesn't cost anything. We just move teachers. And I'm a special ed teacher by trade, and we move with the students. The students don't move, and we stay still. So, part of it can be done, but eventually, you hit a point where you don't have enough people. So, again, as I said in my opening remarks, we like the feedback we got from Dr. Kramer, and we want to make special ed services as high quality as possible with some of the precepts that we had up here and the goals that we have. But somewhere along the line, it needs to take that. I know, and I would be, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the elementary principals meet with us, and we meet with them on a regular basis, especially the second half of every year, to discuss, how do we plan for next year in special ed students? And I know also that prior to our meetings for the last six years, there have been discussions in this district of looking at elementary schools in a different light whereby you could have the possibility of two pre-K-2 schools and two 3, grade 3-5 schools. And every student, regardless of ability, disability, walk of life, would graduate from a pre-K-2 into a 3-5. That's never been taken on. It's been discussed. The PPS office would stand ready to participate in that if anybody chose to take that on as a solution for all students, so that we can approach some clarity on how we provide services as well as equity. Anyway, the third area was review of IEPs and RTI plans. What I was pleased with is, it's like when anybody comes in and looks at us, and the state comes in and audits us on all different levels of IEPs and 504 plans, that the majority of the response was positive. We're doing what we're supposed to do. We're on the right track. There are some things to tighten up, no question. We've listed all of them. We're going to include that in our action plan that was listed in your report, and we're going to move ahead. But basically, we're in compliance. Now, Dr. Kramer is not New York State doing the kind of audit that they might do where it's much more number counting. There's a lot of discussion on how you got to this point, what can you do, how do you get this done? But we agree with a lot of her recommendations in this area, and they are more of a tightening up on some of our processes and procedures. And we're going to talk about how we're going to get to some of that, too. The recommended, oh, here it is. The recommended areas for improvement will be addressed through the review and revision of the existing handbook for special education coupled with staff training. I believe the handbook was written by Jean Par, if I'm not mistaken. She did a marvelous job. I only met her once, I thought she was fabulous. And the fact that she put a lot of that together is amazing from a special education perspective. She put a lot into place. But that's been six or seven years. So, we are making it, as a result of this audit, our goal to update, revise, and rewrite the special education handbook. We're going to need a lot of feedback from a variety of people, both the general ed principals, as well as our attorneys, to help make sure that whatever forms or processes we put in place meet all the current standards. So, that is going to be a big goal. Actually, we're trying to get it done this summer. I know when I went to Dr. Dorwood with it, I kind of sneaked the word "fall" in there, because when I laid it out, I go, "Maybe summer and fall." But it needs to be done soon. Maintain 504 plans under the responsibility of the PPS office. One of the recommendations, as you know, from reading Dr. Kramer's report, was the idea of having principals handle the 504 plans. We did speak with Dr. Kramer about this as well. I don't agree, and not so much that I think she's wrong. I think it's done that way in a number of schools. But the pressure is on, and probably our attorneys can answer that as well. The pressure is on, when we look at a child for consideration for eligibility of 504, we're also looking at the possibilities of a disability or ineligible for special ed. We're not looking for it because we want it to be CSE, but we have to rule some things out. We're doing, on more and more kids with 504 plans, full evaluations, psych ed evals, as well as, you know, the evals pertaining particularly, or assessments or doctors' reports on their particular disability. So, with, with that whole thrust, I would contend that, and we did explain that to Dr. Dorwood, that we see it makes more sense for the district, for the 504 plans, to remain under the responsibility of the PPS office, rather than to deploy it to the principals, and then you're going to have a whole other system to be developed. And quite often, the two processes overlap and use the same resources. Analysis of the RTI plan was the last area that Dr. Kramer looked at. I'm happy to say, we already haven't approved RTI plan. It was completed, I think approved by the board, a year ago this month. And it was written in, through help from the Assistant Superintendent's Office and Dr. Papandrea, who really did a lot of the legwork on it. So, it exists. Everybody was, explained what was in it, and everybody has the responsibility of following that plan. We think after a year of utilization, it would be wise for everyone to come back together and look at how we are following that plan, and what we need to do to, to move it along, what we need to do to make sure we're consistent with it across buildings and across the district. Realignment of role, a PPS director, assistant director, work more closely with RTI teams and their respective principals. I believe that's already in Dr. Papandrea, the district plan, and I would hope that that would be clarified, because we want to be close to what RTI teams are doing. Actually, many of the PPS staff serve on those teams. And we do want to make sure that our procedures are in place, so that we are properly assessing kids for eligibility for CSE or dealing with their needs on tier one and tier two levels of intervention. Implementation of a speech improvement program. I'm going to ask Ms. Triasi to comment on that for a second, because that's going into place now.
So, one of the things that was previously mentioned within the report from Dr. Kramer was to look at the CPSC, the preschool transition into CSE and classification rate, and whether or not those students continue to be, need to be classified. There are a number of students who, through the Committee on Preschool Special Education, receive speech as their only service, and they continue to present with delays requiring some type of intervention, but not necessarily to a level that would require a classification or speech and language classification, special education support. But one of the difficulties we had run into in the past was if we declassify them, and then we don't provide them with the intervention support, a couple of years later, they wind up being classified again. So, is that really serving, is it really meeting the needs of the students, and is it really serving the purpose in terms of our classification rate? So, one of the things that we already put in, we were already putting into place for next year, and then now is coupled with a report, is to have a speech, our speech improvement program in all four elementary buildings next year for the 14, 15 school year. There has been a speech improvement program in one of the buildings for a couple of years, and we've tried to expand it. And what we want to do is make sure that it's consistently implemented in all four buildings. There's, there's going to be criteria in place. And knowing that that program is going to be in place for next year, many students this year at their annual review meetings from the CPSC, from the preschool to the school age, were in fact able to be declassified, knowing that they're going to be able to receive that support. So, we look forward to that. And we're also working on a OT improvement or a handwriting improvement program as well, maybe phasing that in a little bit next year, trying to work out the kinks and then have a solid plan for the following year.
I always come back when there's economics involved. So, and Ms. Quateroni can correct me on this if I'm in error. But at one time, we had, it was called ERS, you know, early intervention-related service programs, which I believe we had reimbursement for. So, here it is, several years later, ERS went the way of, what, magnet schools and all sorts of other things we had. And who's, so what are we doing? Now, we're using existing finances and people to provide these kinds of programs. It seems to be a pattern between the state and public schools. The next item is continue to develop a special education capacity for reading instruction. If, I know it takes a while, but I love the fact that we have reading instruction teachers, special ed teachers at the high school and the middle school, teaching reading instruction, because honestly, we inherit a lot of kids who can't read, or they're so far behind. And what happens is, you just watch this regression as they head towards Regents or diploma responsibilities and requirements. So, special education took on the responsibility. What we did was, we reshaped what our resource rooms look like in middle school and high school. And, and then began supporting, through this district's support, teachers. The BTA was very helpful in making sure that we could work together, and they get teachers trained as Level One Wilson reading teachers. And we now have seven teachers trained on the secondary level. Dr. Dorwood had mentioned this year that we'd like to continue that and push that into the elementary schools. And we already have a plan, and we have a number of people have signed up on the elementary level, so that we may be reshaping what we do on the elementary level to prevent kids from getting to the point where they get into sixth grade with such major reading deficit. So, we're happy that special education has been a critical part of that, and we want to see that continue. The real reason I like to see it continue, and I don't know how many people get into reading instruction classes at the high school or the middle school, you watch kids learn, you could measure it in minutes. The growth is unbelievable. And the Wilson reading program has been excellent, the teachers have been excellent, and the progress monitoring is ongoing and built in. And kids that were written off as not being able to read are now reading, and it's just marvelous. Web-based technology for students in school and at home. We've been using Kurzweil for the last few years. We're phasing that software out and moving in with text help. Read and Write Gold, why do we do that? Because Read and Write Gold has updated, it's more compatible with Google, Google Chrome. It's also used at Dutchess Community College in SUNY New Paul. So, if our students who rely on a web-based service for help with their essay writing, with their reading, et cetera, move on to college and they go locally, they'd be at schools where they're familiar with the software in advance. It's also a little cheaper and a little easier to use with our given system. And I want to give a shout out to Mr. Tim Fasheen for helping us to get to that point. And then, also, we really need to develop tier one and tier two behavioral interventions. If it wasn't for the principals and some very dedicated staff, a lot of kids who have behavioral psychiatric issues, classified or not, really need to have a good response. We're getting better at the academic interventions. We still need to develop the behavioral side of the RTI triangle. Other considerations, we're almost near the end, because I know a lot of special ed speak can overwhelm people. But teacher support for behavioral issues. We are establishing training in the coming year for helping staff to, teachers in particular, to understand what their responses can be within a classroom, so that we can redirect, guide, and support students who do have behavioral issues. Because if you don't have teachers who are well-trained in that area, it winds up in the hall. When it winds up in the hall, it winds up with security or the principal, and then it becomes an entirely different set of circumstances, which is unfair to students and unfair to staff. So, we're trying to put our efforts in professional development with teachers in the class. By the way, we have had that for the last four years, but only for special ed teachers teaching self-contained classes. We think general ed and integrated co-teaching teachers should do it, too. Therapeutic behavioral intervention training for all staff. This has been asked of me for a number of years. I've always been hesitant about training people in what's called TCI by New York State, because half of it is about how to restrain kids, and I don't think we should be doing that. So, if we can get the first half, which is preventive and mediation with kids and helping kids to grow, we'd be, we'd be better off. Doesn't mean that sometimes kids get out of control, they need intervention, but for the most part, we want to teach kids to self-manage to the best of their ability. We can provide that, and I know that Dr. Dorwood has already extended his support in that. Administrative assignment of director and assistant director, I already explained that to you. Systems for evaluation of CSE and 504 referrals. We also want to better systematize, and I think that came hard at me from Dr. Kramer's report, how do we analyze every single referral that we get? You know, we get so busy, I'll be honest with you. I say on Monday, "I want to get this done today," and then about three Mondays later, after like 200 CSE meetings and interventions and things of that sort, you never get to it. But we want to figure out a way to make it systematic, so that there is a constant measurement of how kids become classified and from what source. Therefore, we can figure out other means or other ways to offset that, validate it, and add other supports. The, I think it's the last item, I don't know, don't remember if there's another slide, but parent support. We have, Dr. Kramer, when she did her review, actually came to a parent meeting on a, on a Thursday night and met with our parents, and talked about the development of special education PTA. That's what SEPTA is. I've been in it for, wanting it for a while. We might as well make it a district-wide effort. I think it would help all parents of all students with disabilities. And I think it would be a, an opportunity also to extend through parents the supports within the community for what we're trying to do with their children in the school. And that was the last slide, I was correct. I know that was lengthy, maybe for a workshop, there's not a whole lot of time for questions, but if you feel this time, we'd be happy to answer it.
I see.
How did I know you were going to?
Sorry.
It's okay.
One question I have, and you just kind of said how busy you and Mrs. Triasi are in, you know, dealing with the IEPs and such. So, how is that going to impact you being able to track the added district placement students? I mean, you said you're kind of splitting the duties for the added district placement students.
Well, yeah, the added district, I don't feel is a major issue. I just want to recant, restate that we used to have about 120-something kids in added district schools. We have less than 70 now. So, and I have spent my whole career, not just my work here in this district, knowing exactly where they are, who's working with them, and what programs rank very well. And so, it's a smaller amount for us to share. Ms. Triasi, because she has CPSC, has a small number of added district kids. I handle the other most of them. So, I don't think that's the problem. When it comes to evaluations of added district, and you have to start sending your staff out to do assessments and things, that is hard.
Have you, have you considered having our staff then track the added district placement?
Have, we considered?
Having our psychologist track added district placement?
Every single added district school is assigned to a psychologist. So, tomorrow, I'm going to a school in Massachusetts for which one of our psychologists has done the updated psych ed eval that will be presented. If I want to talk about, I'll just use an example, Orange Elstebosse's, I will use a particular psychologist. They are the contact person for that, they know the programs. In years past, it was alphabetical, or luck of the draw, or unluck of the draw. Now, we, everyone is assigned to particular schools, because we don't use a whole lot of schools. We use three Bosse's, but we're able to do. I'm not so concerned about it, but it's a good question.
My next question was regarding the resource room, because I was looking at how you were phasing in different programming. I mean, is, how is resource room, like, provided to the students currently?
You're talking on the elementary level?
On the elementary level.
It's, it's, you want to?
So, currently, in two of the buildings, we have a resource room teacher that's split between two of the buildings, and will service the students in kindergarten through fifth grade in those two buildings. And then, in the other two buildings, there's a teacher, in one of the buildings, there's a teacher that's an integrated co-teacher in a, in a classroom for half of the day, and then the other part of the day is servicing students K through 5 in resource room. And then, that's the same for the other school. Is that, is that what your question was? How's it current? Okay. Then I saw in some of your phasing in that, you know, students may need to go to, like, particular buildings or? Right. To receive that. And that's to keep the staff number the same.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, I thought, I thought Dr. Kramer's report was great, and I thought your response was really good. One of the things that came across for a few recommendations would require additional staffing. And of course, all the resources are somewhat limited, and we're sort of following the state's cap on, on, on the budget and the tax, taxing. So, I'm assuming that, we'd love to support you and get everything done as quickly as possible, and the resources may prevent that from happening as quickly as we'd like to happen. Do you, have you prioritized how you're going to be implementing the recommendations, so that the ones that, maybe the biggest bang for the buck can be done first and?
Good. Former administrator responsible for budget, okay? It's always in the picture. When you're servicing kids and you're deciding their needs, you're following what their needs are based on federal and state law. But in fact, districts have to manage this. There are varieties of ways of doing some of the things even Dr. Kramer suggested. For example, in, in the elementary schools and integrated co-teaching, we used to have one, just one special ed teacher, one general ed teacher, one TA, all in the same class all day. We changed that in 2008, '09, my first year. Not responsible, but I was part of the decision as it came in. We, we cut that down from three people in the class to one and a half. It hasn't worked. So, everybody says, "Well, maybe we should put the two teachers back in the class." Even Dr. Kramer suggests that as the primary model. I think you could get as much out of it if you looked at what the teaching assistance training is and solidify that. It might be a more economic model and meet the demand. I know a lot of people would argue with that, but you still have a special ed teacher splitting, but you have a full-time person with them. So, there's an example. There are a number of other recommendations she made that we do prioritize. We told Dr. Dorwood the other day, we can move into, we are going to move into phase one, year one next, this coming year. It doesn't cost anything, it's just moving a teacher to another building. And so, right now, when a new kindergarten And so, right now, when a new kindergarten class comes in, we call up Ms. Candello at Glenham, say, "This year, you have the new kindergarten special ed class coming in," and she grows them through K through five. The next year, we go to Mr. Zhang and say, "At Sargent, we need you to do that." Instead of doing that, we're going to spread it across all four buildings. That will help us to plant the seeds for special education redistribution. So, and some of that doesn't cost anything. Some of the others, it does cost, but I would assume that's part of a process every year. What we're proposing today puts no tax, no burden on the existing recently-approved budget for 14-15 school year. It may in the following ones, but I'll come back to you next year.
I figured eventually it would. And the other question I had to do, when you were talking about the redistribution of the special ed services across the four schools, how are you handling the fact that not all the schools are equally handicap accessible?
Ah, that's a great question. You know, every, every year when I have to write, or every other year when I write the biannual plan, I have to write something about appropriate space and access. And I think in some buildings, we've, we've moved kids to accommodate their needs. So, I don't have an answer for that. I would, I would defer to some of my other colleagues and my bosses in terms of that. But that's a great question, and it really does need to be legally covered every two years in a plan, so. But basically, to be honest with you, when we get a kid who can't manage that facility, we have moved them. Might not be fair. So, but that's what we've done.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes. On your spreadsheet for the three-year PPS plan, I see that the spectrum class is being phased into a Bosse's class, or being contracted to Bosse's. However, in the 14-15 year, I see no coverage for kindergarten. In 15-16, I see no K-1 coverage, and in 16-17, I see no K-2 coverage. What happens if we have children coming in that, on the spectrum, that require those grades?
Before I let Nicole answer, let me just talk about our, our terminology of bubble classes. We have never felt, as we developed our specialized class, we have therapeutic classes for kids who are psychiatrically involved, and we have classes for kids on the autism spectrum. We've always struggled with the fact, do we have enough really to support a class? Which is why we created a bubble class. So, I'll give you this. The, the original spectrum class we started several years ago, which was a grade three, four, five, is now actually a seven, eight, nine. And the class we started as a one, a K-1, two, is now going to be two, three, four? Two, three, four. So, to answer your question, and I mean this to target it, if a child comes before us who is on the spectrum, who needs a class, I may not have it. I would do what I traditionally do and look for, for an appropriate added district placement for them, unless we were able to figure out that we could couple some kids together and have another bubble class and protect those kids as we grow them. Bosse's comes into that, and I'll leave that to Ms. Triasi, too, because that was a discussion we had a couple of years ago, and Bosse's was willing. They were going to run our class for us, and then they backed out at the last second for whatever reason. That would also be an option, and I think that's why we put that in there. I don't know if you want to?
Right, that, that's the reason that we put it in there, is because, like Mr. Mulhern just said, we have the bubble classes, and then even, you know, next year, we have, it will be a one, two, three, or a two, three, four. And if we have kindergartners coming in on the spectrum, what do we need to do? We don't have enough to create another bubble class, so we do have to look for other placements. But if, having a Bosse's class would serve two purposes, essentially, one, if, if we were able to have an in-district class Bosse's with, open to other districts, then there would be enough students to be able to have one of those classes, so that it would always be able to be maintained. The reason that we have bubble classes right now is that we're not able to maintain the numbers that we need for a class. So if we are able to have it open to other districts, we would be able to maintain it. And then, at least, yes, it would still be a Bosse's-run class, but at least our students would be able to be serviced in their home school or in their home district, as long as their needs are within the level of that class. And then, the other purpose that it serves is, it goes back to Mr. Zoff's question before, okay, how are you going to prioritize so that, we're looking at budgetary factors as well? And essentially, if we are turning that class into a Bosse's class, then we have our teacher who was doing the spectrum class, and we're able to utilize that teaching support somewhere else within, maybe one of the integrated classes, or to make one of the self-contains and a single-grade class. So that's the way that we're trying to do it, so that we're not increasing the amount of staff that we need.
I want to add that the proposal that we have here is a proposal. I mean, we're, it would take a lot of discussion. If you remember, two years ago, discussion of a Bosse's class really has to be discussed by the BTA as well, and the district. There is money paid to us for having a Bosse's class, but it's a nominal rent for space, that's about it. Ms. Quateroni, there's no other money involved, right? There's no reduction in tuition or anything like that?
The tuition costs would be the same to Bosse's, but we get the run back.
Yep, so we pay the same as if we were sending the children to Dutchess Bosse's, but they are, you know, in their, they're with their cohort, they're with the other kids they live in the neighborhood with, so. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular person, and the board will return it if possible.